John.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'll make this quick, given the hour and your schedule. So, again, the Community Development Department, broken up into three primary functions. The Building Department, issuance of building permits in support of that. Planning, which has kind of a broader range of activities ranging from large projects like the Baylands and ecology to a variety of city-initiated planning endeavors as well as private planning applications. And then the third function is code enforcement. So those are the three basic functions. Talking about next year's work plan, I think the city attorney touched on a couple that will be a focus this coming fiscal year. Primarily ecology, that EIR, and the Baylands Planning and Environmental Review Process being two major efforts that are underway. As, similar to what he mentioned in terms of funding, those particular efforts are funded through the applicants. So ecology and UPC are responsible for the bulk of those, funding those particular efforts. The other ones up here, one is the Southeast Crocker Park Precise Plan, and the other is kind of Housing Element Implementation. As you may remember, when we adopted the housing element earlier this year, we have an obligation to follow through by rezoning a couple of sites to achieve our housing, our regional housing needs allocation, or RENA numbers. And we have an obligation to complete that by early 2016. So, again, the original thought envisioned that that effort would be encompassed or covered under the Southeast Crocker Park Precise Plan. I think as we had discussion earlier, that was one of the items that was proposed for budgetary removal. And irrespective of what happens with that precise plan, the Housing Element Implementation Program would need to move forward, absent a Southeast Crocker plan. So either it's going to be rolled into that, or it's going to be a standalone effort. So, really, those are my comments. I'd be glad to entertain any questions you have.
Yeah, I have a question for you, John. Are you going to be here tomorrow night?
I will be here tomorrow night if I need to be here tomorrow night.
Okay, because it is late, and I know that's one of the items that the Budget Subcommittee has requested not to fund. I think it's an important thing to fund, and so that's on tomorrow night's agenda to discuss those items.
Okay.
So, I don't have any questions.
Well, I had questions about that, but if you're going to be here, then I don't have any questions.
I guess it's up to the city manager if the preference is to discuss it or at the end of your entire meeting. That's your...
I guess it's up, well, I'm going to kick it back to the mayor and the council. I mean, it depends on when you want to have the discussion.
Well, the hour is getting late, and I think that the zoning precise plan or looking at Crocker Park is something that is a big budgetary item, and so I think it's going to require some deeper thought and discussion than possibly we have available right now due to the late hour. I think one of the big questions that we had in the Subcommittee was that if we didn't do the $200,000 budgetary request for rezoning the Crocker industry, or the, I want to call it the village area, because the other terms we use for it seem clunky to me, what you would need instead to do just the zoning that we've agreed to do. So, you know, where it's a $200,000 item here, if it was just the smaller portion of just doing the rezoning, if that would require, you know, funding in a different amount. And I think that was one of the questions the Subcommittee had. And I think staff was going to see if you had a...
Yeah, if you want to discuss that tonight.
Come back for that. I mean, I...
It's your discretion.
Well, I think that if we're going to wait to get an overall look at where we want to be budgetarily, I think that some of that discussion would come tomorrow night. But if you had an answer, at least that would put something in our heads for tonight if...
Yeah, I think there's, I mean, I don't want to belabor it or get, there are three kind of components if you move forward with the precise plan as originally envisioned. There's kind of an economic piece to make sure that you're kind of coming up with a plan that has some economic viability. There's a technical piece of, you know, looking at the planning, design issues, transportation issues, if you're looking at sort of a re-envisioning the entry to town and how circulation off bayshore works with a reconfigured village. And then there's a third component of community engagement. So those are the three pieces. You could probably, I think with a, and let's say they're all a third, you know, say they're all $60,000 pieces of the puzzle. If you were going to separate out and just limit yourself to the housing element rezoning, I think the city would still be well-served by a very robust community engagement process and a bit of design technical assistance, because I think a lot of it is trying to sort of reach from the community, get the idea of what the community vision is for that area, and then try to make sure that the form of the regulations then ensure that that form of development is what actually occurs out there. So those are the two pieces that would still need to happen. The third piece, the economics, is probably a much lesser important component if you're not really touching the village. Probably would want to look at the mixed-use kind of aspect to some extent. So, you know, could you reduce it by half? Maybe you could reduce it by half. There's a little bit of an opportunity for grant money that I was going to, you know, elaborate on tomorrow if that's the more appropriate place, that a shrunken-down project may be a little less compelling as a grant recipient. I can't guarantee we're going to get any grants, but I have a couple that I'm aware of that, within the timeframe we need, are, I'm aware of grant proposals that could be made. And so, I mean, that's kind of part of the trade-off. There's no guarantee, but it's possible we could offset some of the funding for a larger precise plan effort with some outside money. So, you know, I think those opportunities are highly limited, but then again, the whole cost will go down, so maybe it becomes a lower cost, but I would say, you know, you're still looking at a low six-figure kind of effort to really, I think, get the community engagement that I think is really critical. That's the most critical element of this, I believe.
Okay. Lori, did you have any questions?
I didn't have any questions, but I do want to echo Cliff's sentiments that I do believe that the precise plan would be beneficial, but we can talk more about that tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you, John.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned here that Guadalupe EIR is, you know, the things that you would be commenting on. Is that actually, the quarry, is that actually going to happen?
Oh, is that in the narrative?
Yes.
I think that might, I don't foresee anything happening, well, I mean, the county, if the county moves forward with that permit, it's possible that could happen within this fiscal year. I would expect we might need some outside consulting.
I was just wondering whether anything's happening or not.
Yeah, what I hear is certainly if the development opportunity gets more remote than the county, and, you know, they would need to move forward with that permit extension if the development isn't really in the cards. I think the whole permit extension through the county was deferred on the idea that, well, there's a new developer, there's a proposal, they'll go through an EIR process here, we won't need to extend the permit. If that doesn't happen, then, yeah, the county process needs to play out. I haven't heard anything other than probably about 60 days ago that the prospective buyer had done some due diligence, and they were very concerned that the cost of developing the site, you know, were making the economics of the sale somewhat problematic, and they were going to go back to the seller and see if they could make some adjustments, and I haven't heard anything since then.
But we did, to follow up on that, I'm sorry, we, as a city, did ask the county to move forward or to sort of prod them along on, before this developer came in, to ask for a decision on the permit or to find out the status of the permit.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've been trying to prod the county to move forward, and this is kind of the chicken-and-egg thing that we constantly got ourselves caught into, or the county gets themselves caught into, is that every time somebody comes forward with the idea of looking at the property, they kind of stop and say, okay, we'll let that process move through. So, I think John and I have been kind of waiting for this iteration and this particular negotiation to work its way through. It doesn't sound like it's going to come to anything, and if that then dies, then I think it would be a great time to then kind of put the pressure on the county to get this permit going through the process and get it renewed.
I did just talk to Mitch Ball this morning, and he said there was a new potential developer that's approached him, wanting to learn about the site for an industrial or commercial use. And so he's had some preliminary discussions with them, and he sounded a little more hopeful about that than the former entity, Skanel.
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry, sorry. Everybody jumped on me. The, I think where we need to get to is that if this particular relationship or this particular business deal falls through, and they're not in contract with anybody, the current owners, notwithstanding these speculations, because, quite frankly, Lori, this comes up all the time, you know, then I think that's the point in time where we have to really kind of put the pressure on the county, and we may need the council to make some phone calls to some supervisors to get this thing moving, because it's just, you know, the would-be quarry purchasers are a dime a dozen. And, you know, the, I think what's, you know, just to finish the thought, that I think what's kind of good about this particular iteration is that there was some real work done by Skanel in terms of the cost to develop this site, and it's, and it's, they've come away with a picture that's just not pretty at all. So it just may not be that development is in the cards anytime in the, you know, near future.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
City Manager, pages 76 through 78.
I'll do the best I can for the City Manager. So there's a number, well, normally it would be Maria, but Maria's not here at the moment. So, number of issues for the department that they work through, council relations, they manage staff, intergovernmental relations, public inquiries and responses, communications, economic development, project management, they're in charge of reception, and they deal with the art, community relations issues. The issues for their work plan for the upcoming year, they have the economic development, and as you know, we've contracted with Mitch Bull with that, and then there's also the long-term financial planning issues that we have discussed all evening. That's the presentation.
Good job.
Thanks. If there are specific questions, I'll do my best. Or if you want me to move on to cosponsorships, I can do that.
I have a question.
I have a question, too.
So two of them have questions. Yeah. I'm a little bit, straighten me out here, on what positions are allocated where, okay? Because if you look on page 62, under City Manager, there are 4.05 positions.
Correct.
One of which is the City Clerk, and another which is the Open Space and Ecology Analyst.
Sure. So, the, and this is an issue that we have, you know, where we've worked through, is the City Clerk reports directly to the City Manager, it's considered part of the City Manager's function, so that's why the City Clerk comes in underneath the City Manager there. And the Open Space and Ecology, although it reports through the Public Works Department, it's still seen as an overall function of the city, so it's still an overall function of the City Manager.
But since there is a, I mean, I just found it a little bit confusing, because just for someone looking and looking at the positions and the dollar figures, and it just seems that Open Space and Ecology should be elsewhere than now that we, you know, shifted that over to...
Well, they still have their own department.
Yeah.
So it would, you know, so it's still a...
Under Public Works, in a way, it's administered through Public Works now.
Right, I mean, it reports through Public Works, but it would be similar to Parks and Recreation having a separate department, but it still, it reports through me as the Deputy City Manager. The RENA has a separate department, and that reports through Public Works. So Open Space and Ecology is a separate function.
Right.
The function is more of an overall city, City Manager type of function, and that's why it's shown that way in the budget. We can change that.
Yeah.
If you think it would be more...
Me, I think it's a little bit confusing, because I think most people would consider that something that's specific to that function rather than, you know, in the City Manager.
Right, but that...
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, you look at the dollar figures there, and it says, you know, it looks pretty big, well, that City Manager really makes a lot of money, you know? Well, that's because there's four positions there, and that's what accounts for the salary amount. So I was just trying to figure how to make that more clear when, whenever I get calls, whenever anybody complains about who gets paid too much, it's always the same answer.
I mean, the City Manager...
I got a suggestion, because I had thought about this, too.
Okay.
Yeah, and, I mean, because it's kind of, not everybody, but it's throughout the budget, and, you know, like, City Manager, City Clerk, part of them goes to, and yourself, goes to the successor agency.
Correct.
And maybe just kind of make an asterisk of some sort to where it kind of correlates how that ties into this, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Where, yeah, it's like having a sub-note, like, you know, using not just 62, but when you go to payroll allocations.
Right.
Like on page 67, where you can kind of do a correlation of, because it has, there it has salaries, the full salary.
Correct.
But when you go to the line item of the department, it could be less, because part of that salary is tied somewhere else.
Right, and that's what we...
I think that's what Ray's talking about.
Right, and that's what we try and show on that page.
Yeah.
Where we say that 97% of the City Manager...
97% or whatever.
Is in the City Manager's department, and then 3% is in Successor Agency. I think that's...
Yeah, and maybe just put a page number that would correlate.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Right.
And I think that's your point, Ray, of track, of being able to track it, you know?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
But we can, I can make a change on, you know, that overall, that other page on the allocations and, you know, change where they're allocated, but that was just the rationale that we've used in the past, is that City Clerk is more of the function of the City Manager, and Open Space and Ecology has, you know, no matter where it's reported, because it's, at some point, it's reported through me as well, but we still say it's a function of the City Manager.
No, it captures, it definitely captures it, but you've got to kind of, you know, think about it a little bit, and it's a little stimulating, and, you know, we're used to budgets, and people that aren't used to it, you know, more of a layoff.
Same point, exactly.
Okay, and I can put, along with the percentage, which page number, which page number that shows up on.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful.
If that would be, if that would make people understand it better.
Yeah.
As you know, that's always my goal, is every year to make it a little bit more understandable.
You say have a place to go back to and say, oh, okay, I get it now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, you just don't want, I would prefer not to have a phone call saying, oh, I see the City Manager makes $333,000, you know? I mean, that's kind of for the person who is not used to budgets and all the back-and-forth and the allocations and so forth, that's kind of the layperson's reaction, and I've had that before. And then you go through this, you know, elaborate explanation, but there are a lot of people who probably see it that way and don't call me, and so I'm just trying to sort of make it clear to the general...
Yeah, we gave a raise, goodbye.
He doesn't make that much money.
No, and that's specifically why we have that other page, which shows everybody's salary, every position's salary and every position's benefit.
We looked through all of that, but, you know, most people, you know, are not going to do that.
No, I understand.
So that's the reason.
Okay.
Thanks.
And Clay would be very appreciative if you gave him $300,000.
Yeah, I do have a question if I can. Madam Mayor, the fiber optic consultant, so we've been, yeah, in collaboration with the City of Millbrae, that conduit that runs along bayshore, Caltrain is running their conduit, where they've already laid their conduit on railroad tracks, so the need for the fiber optic consultant, I mean, I understand the need to make our industrial park more competitive by having the high-speed fiber optic cable, but the part about hiring the consultant, if you could just elaborate on that.
Sure, and I think Stuart can probably input to this, too. We sat down, staff sat down with Michael, it's too bad he's not still here, but there's a number of legal issues having to do with the city's rights and authorities and obligations, I guess, to get into this business, and, you know, it was an area that is kind of very specialized, and Michael felt that it would be best if we could find an attorney, and there are some attorneys out there who have specialized in this. The other aspect of it is that we need to have some sort of financial analysis done at some point if we really are going to get into this business. So that was kind of the idea of being able to kind of pull this together, see whether or not, you know, kind of as Clark indicated, we've been talking about this for five years now, really doing an analysis that, you know, could really line out our legal issues as well as the financial issues, and so that we can decide whether we want to do this or not.
Yeah, because this just started back 2010, it was the ad hoc committee I did when I was mayor then, and, you know, to really think about it and to see if we can capitalize upon it, and, you know, it's been an ongoing, slow, slow process, and so, you know, this is kind of where, you know, right before the rubber meets the road, are we going to meet the road, you know what I mean? So, and, you know, it's kind of a thing of coming of age, too, you know, that we really, you know, want to look at what we want to do from an economic development standpoint to make our park better, but it also might be a way that we strengthen our coffers, you know, the potential is there, and so...
Yeah, I know that Wayne is, Wayne Lee, Councilmember from Millbrae, has really been promoting, you know, wanting his city to be in the business of providing that high-speed fiber optic cable.
Yeah.
To end users. How that business model works, I'm not sure. They were supposed to bring back some information to us.
We haven't heard anything for months from them about this.
Yes.
I'm not sure where they're, where they're at. And then, City of San Bruno is another city that has actually had a pretty robust system for a number of years. I mean, they actually sell cable services.
Their own cable company, yeah.
So it's a little bit different. But this is also the conversation we've had around wireless, because there's been some talk in town about the city getting into that business also, so I think we just need to kind of pull all this together and be able to look at both the legal issues as well as the financial realities of getting into this and see whether or not we really want to do it, you know, whether we feel like we want to take the risk that's going to be, would be involved, and just how we would, how we would put something together.
Remember, and that was one of the questions that we had asked, you know, prior, about the powers of GVMID, of being able to expand them.
Right.
And this is all, it all ties into this, so...
Right.
All right, thank you, Clay.
I don't know if you want me to go on tonight, or if you want to wait, save stuff for tomorrow night.
Well, I'm assuming you're here tomorrow night also.
I am here all week.
Might as well finish what's on the agenda, anyway.
Yeah, stack it up for tomorrow night.
Right.
Okay. We just got a later start than we should have tonight, so...
So, motion to extend the meeting to, let's see, word 11:05, 11:06.
Okay, Department of Presentations for a cosponsorship.
11:15.
All in favor?
I was going to talk very fast.
Okay.
So, for cosponsorships, you have, you know, we have a lot of traditional things that we've done in the past, Live at Mission Blue, Mothers of Brisbane, Brisbane Dance Workshops, San Bruno Mountain Watch. So anytime anybody uses one of our facilities where we are looking to co-sponsor with them, where they get to, they use our facility for free, we do setup, we do cleanup for them, you know, Live at Mission Blue is a big one, where we put up risers in Brisbane Dance Workshop, we put up risers for them, we do lighting for them, all those things, Artist Evening Sharing, all those come in under the of cosponsorships. The library is just the same as we've always done in the past.
So, um...
All right. You have a question?
Yeah, I did. You had co-sponsorship '78, '79, but it looks like we have duplicate page 78s.
No.
I don't, I have 79.
I got 78 and 79.
I have 78, and then 78 is a...
79 looks like this here.
The note section.
There's my 78, the prior 78.
Yeah, I have duplicate, too, but not a big deal. It's, 78 is the last page in the City Manager.
Okay, I was just...
I apologize, when we copied it, we must have...
My 78 is a cosponsorship.
Mine says event cosponsorship, 78.
So does my other 78.
Oh, you got two 78s.
Yeah, you got a couple pages forward, and we've got 78.
It may have been when we copied it, we, instead of leaving the next number, 79, we may have retyped 78 on it.
79.
Because it comes through the printer, so we may have just, when we copied that section, just started from the wrong number.
See, it's 78. Anyway, that's fine.
I apologize.
That's fine. It's getting too late to be looking at page numbers, much less the numbers.
I have a question on page 79, which I have. So what is Eric Zivian Lam for 575? Never heard of that.
I'd have to look it up. Have to go back and...
That's a musician.
He was a musician.
Okay.
He played, he was a violinist at the, Live at Mission Blue.
Okay.
These, yeah.
Yeah, I got two 78s also, no.
And so when the cosponsorship involves the city providing, like, risers or, you know, doing, you know, kind of like an in-kind donation, you know, rather than...
Well, actually, those are only things that we pay for, so when we do risers, we don't, we don't set them up and take them down ourselves, we hire somebody to do that.
Oh, I see, so you hire it, and the city covers that cost.
Correct, and when we bring a cosponsorship to the City Council for approval, it has a breakdown of what those costs are. And we do, and we do bring all those cosponsorships one by one back to the City Council for their approval.
But when the city is agreeing to waive a fee, a rental fee, how is that reflected?
That would, that's not reflected anywhere, it's just that we just don't take the money in.
Okay.
I want to speak...
What happened to the library?
Oh, the library, I don't have any slides for, because it's the same thing that we always do, it's the, we are putting, you know, we paid down, we have additional hours, we pay for the janitorial for that. I think we do extra half hour, three hours a week.
Three hours a week.
Three hours a week.
I had a question on the library.
Oh.
On the line item, it's page 97, the 52 to 44 utilities.
Yes.
Has like gone up 110, 120%.
It's what it's costing us to run the building at this point in time, you know, it could be that in the, I'd have to see what we're running this fiscal year, but what it is is, we may have been, we may have had a more expensive year, this year as well.
Last year said $1,800, and this year is $4,000.
Right, what was the, I don't have it in front of me, what was the actual expenditure in '13, '14?
3290, 3692.
So what it was is 32, 30... come in over budget. And so the fifteen, sixteen is a more accurate project.
Twelve thirteen was nine hundred and fourteen dollars. And then thirteen, fourteen was thirty-six ninety-two.
I mean, we can, we can go back and do researches to.
I think, I think I had asked.
It's like all over.
About this at one point and I think it wasn't on the library, but it might have been on the community center. And I think we had a more specific breakout of the electric bills and the gas bills where we actually took a harder look and cost, costed it to the actual facilities. And so that was one of the differences when I saw it in the budget, in the expenditures, one of those documents when I was looking at budget. So I think that we had had a twenty thousand dollar bill to spread out of, over facilities and had been misallocated over several years because it wasn't apportioned correctly.
Yeah, it's all goofy because it was like eighteen hundred and eleven, twelve, and then nine hundred and twelve, thirteen, and thirty-six hundred.
I mean, part of it was one year they did not, you know, PGE was behind on billing us for the actual. So there was a catch-up. And, you know, and, you know, the mayor is correct, is we try every year to become better and better in breaking up the cost between the facilities. And that is a building where you have the community center and you have the library and trying to split that cost between the two, you know, we just need to.
So is it for both?
Hmm?
It then includes that both, both levels?
It, we, we have, we pay for both levels. And how we split that up and when we get the bill is probably the question that has caused us problems in the past.
Well, I was at my library board meeting this morning and we learned about another library, I think it was Woodside or Foster City, that put solar panels on their roof and then put electric vehicle parking in the parking lot, which gets power from the solar panels. And they're allowing free parking. And so something to consider for our new library project.
New library, yeah. Good plan.
Then we won't have to deal with the utilities as much.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a follow-up on, that's related to that. So where in the budget, you know, we have this vision and financial plan and even the beginning first step for the new library. Is that anywhere in the budget?
That is not because there has not been any, I mean, I looked at Clay, there has not been any formal council action as to where that would come from at this point because we don't have.
We did agree to, you know, hiring the first stage of getting people to come in and make presentations.
The architectural.
Right. But that's already been.
Stuart and I probably need to get together on this because we would anticipate at least some of the planning money to be spent in the 2015, sixteen.
Right.
Right. But if you had allocated it, if you had approved it in the fourteen, fifteen, it would be a supplemental appropriation in fourteen, fifteen, and then it gets carried over.
Right.
Into the future years. And it doesn't show up as a new budget item. It just gets carried over as a, it gets carried over as an encumbrance from year to year.
Right. But where would that be?
We just have that twenty-five thousand that we, or twenty thousand that we approved.
Right.
Where would it show up? I guess is my question.
It would show, it would show up as an actual expense in the year it happened. And then if there's going to be, if we need to carry money over, what you will see is at the mid-year, I will bring forward the things that are get carried over and then will be reallocated as part of the overall, as part of that process.
And what budget would it be in?
That would probably end up in the library budget because that's where.
Library budget. Okay.
Because what you want to do is want to keep the cost for the departments in the same areas.
Right. Okay. So that'll show up in the, in the mid-year?
If, yes. If we have not spent all the money and we're, and we plan to spend the money in fifteen, sixteen.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And just to note at today's meeting, Supervisor Groom noted that regarding the Measure A fund, she, they didn't make a decision yet, but she said that something to the effect of, you know, that she was hopeful that there would be Measure A funds for library projects without being any more specific.
Not necessarily ours.
Well, I can.
I spoke to Harlene.
I could follow up on that just a little bit. I did have a conversation with Supervisor Tessier on Friday afternoon. And she's still very motivated to help us out to some, in some manner. I think she's looking at potentially helping us with some of the planning or architectural service costs, which not a lot in the whole scheme of things, but it's, it's, it's some amount of money. And then she also floated the idea of some sort of loan package and that's something Stuart and I need to kind of think, think through and see where that, if that could help or not, or, or just how that might work. So I think we're going to get something. I just don't know exactly how much right, right now. And my understanding is the way the county is doing this is that this, this pot of money that each supervisor has can be committed over a two-year period of time. So maybe that we get some dollars this year and some dollars next year. So, but anyway, it was, it was not a no. It was, you know, she wants to put some money into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the city clerk, page is seventy-three, seventy-five.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, included in the city clerk's department are elections, local legislation, municipal officer, political reform filings, records and archives, public inquiries and relationships, city council support, affordable housing, which is something not really in the city clerk's department, but something I've taken on, and oversight board and successor agency. The only new area to the budget this year is the cost for this 2015 city council election. And there will be two seats and the nomination period for that election begins in, on July thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
July thirteenth.
And that's the opening of the filing period?
That's the opening for the nomination period for, for running for city council.
And when does that period, do you know when that period closes?
August seventh.
Thank you.
So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one question. So the storing inactive records at storage facility, that's a nine thousand dollar cost, same as last year. Where is that? And is that something that if we have a room at the new library, would that make that no longer necessary?
Right now, those records are stored at Data Lock here in the Crocker Industrial Park.
Okay.
And I, I doubt, I guess I doubt that we would want to have, it's a large amount of boxes. And I don't think that we would want to use that real estate to store these boxes.
Okay, those aren't archived.
No, not archived. So we would, I, I'm very hopeful that there will be an archive room, but that is, would it be a smaller type space and, and more for displaying all of the great things that we have in a smaller room upstairs at city hall. So these are actually paper records that go back from, for many, many years.
Okay. Are they continuing to be accumulated or are things all now?
They are. They are. And we're working, I am working on a long-term plan for records retention where, where we can destroy some of the older ones. And we'll be bringing that forward and maybe next year or the year after. So.
Thank you.
Sherry, there's a guy that worked for Spencer's and Sons.
What, oh, you're asking me his name? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah. No, he's, he's contacted me before and said, you know, the city's got a lot of records up here. Are you aware of that? Or?
Oh, at?
At Spencer's and Spencer and Sons, the contractor here?
No.
Oh, yeah. Apparently there's supposed to be some, some records of the city there. And I meant to tell you about that and now I just, I just remembered. So.
No, that's the first I've heard of it. I would be so surprised that that was the case.
Yeah.
Did he say what type of records or from what period of time?
He didn't really indicate because I guess they're in boxes of some sort. So.
And he's not talking about the records at Data Lock nearby his facility?
Not, I asked him that. I said, no. He says, no, no. He goes, he, he works for the mechanical contractor, Spencer and Sons. I go, okay, I'll ask the city clerk. So.
Well, that would be so odd to have.
Maybe Data Lock moved him over.
They needed, they rented it out. Well, here to take Brisbane records.
Have you ever talked to him again? If you get his name and number, I'll call him.
Yeah. I, you know, I got his name, not off the top of my head, but I got a card somewhere. So.
Okay. Well, maybe you could store some of our other ones for free too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I think we're ready for an adjournment. If I have a motion?
I move.
Say it.
Home favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.[1770.58]